Hello everyone and Shalom. Welcome to a special session of Yoga Readers, today with Lois Steinberg. For those of you joining us here for the first time, Yoga Readers is a global yogic reading community that offers online sessions through Zoom. We read together the books of Dhyayangar's. We have a WhatsApp group and a Facebook group, and we have just finished reading Yoga A Gem for Women by Gita Ayengar. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Agi Vitich. I'm an Ayengar yoga teacher and practitioner, and I have a PhD in religions. My dissertation was about Ayengar yoga and women. So let me present Dr. Lois Steinberg, who is a world-renowned senior Ayengar yoga teacher with over four decades of dedicated practice and teaching. She is a direct student of BKS Ayengar Guruji and his family, and she is recognized for her depth of knowledge, precision, and compassionate teaching style. She holds a PhD and has an extensive background in both academic research and yoga practice. And her academic training has informed her approach to yoga therapy, particularly in the context of health and wellness. She teaches regularly at Ayengar Yoga Champagne Urbana, I hope I pronounced it correctly, in Illinois, the United States. She also conducts online classes, and she has international workshops and teacher intensives. She offers recorded workshops and webinars, which are available for rent to certified Ayengar yoga teachers and students. And she also has 15 recorded Q&amp;A sessions that are available for free with an index. Lois has also authored and co-authored several highly respected books and practice guides. These include resources that support yoga practitioners and teachers through different life stages and health conditions. Her publications are used worldwide by teachers and students alike. I have some of them here. I think the most important piece, then the first one that I got was her notes from the International Women's Intensive in 1997, which I talked a lot about during our read of Yoga A Gem for Women. She also has a very good Ayengar yoga cancer book, and all these books are really comfortable to work with, to practice with. They're filled with easy pictures and detailed information about how to use them. And while you're practicing, you can just open them, put them down, and they just stay open. So that's great. I've reused a lot of her knee book, which is also advised. She has a neck and shoulder book. She has an old book, a previous one. I don't know if it was reprinted, Ayengar Yoga Therapeutics for the Lower Back, another gem. And I think the book that I talk the most about is Gita Ayengar's Guide to a Woman's Yoga Practice, which is about the menstrual cycle and how to practice for women with different menstrual conditions. So this was the introduction, Lois. Would you like to add something to this? Or did I say something?
Oh, thank you. That's a wonderful introduction. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for joining us today. And we'll start by a few questions that I prepared for Lois, and then we'll have some time at the end for questions and answers. If you can, write your questions on a note, not in the chat, because it's a bit disturbing, and we'll have time for you at the end. And then you can write your questions in the chat or open the mic. Lois, you are both a senior Ayengar yoga teacher and an author. And I wanted to ask what inspired you to write Ayengar books, such as Gita Ayengar's Guide to a Woman's Yoga Practice? And also, if you could address, what was the gap that you felt that needed filling for practitioners and teachers through these books?
Oh, that's a wonderful question, and it's going to be an involved answer, because what inspired me first was, it was 1997 when I was teaching in a yoga center here in the States, a workshop. And I always did like therapy work, like afternoon sessions, we're always working on therapeutics to share with everybody. And my host took photos from the workshop and put it in a book and sent it to me. And actually, I brought just some pages of the names of the poses that we were gonna cover, and I thought then people could write notes or whatever. And that page, those pages turned into the yellow book, which I don't think you have. It's just a General Anger Yoga Therapeutics book. It's got some pregnancy in it. It's got respiratory. Just really, somebody's unmuted. It's got just really basic stuff. When I looked at what this person had prepared, and despite their great effort, all the photos were of my butt. It was like I'd be bending over, doing something, adjusting something, and I would take the photo, and there was my butt, like, in the center of the photo. And I thought, oh no, they don't know how to do the photos and what they wrote. The description wasn't correct, a lot of things. So I said, okay, I'm just gonna have to do this myself. And so I just started with this, the original pages and put photos. And then the next one was a low back that you showed, that I never converted into a book, then the neck and shoulders, and which did get converted actually into a book. When I was working on the cancer, or when I was working on the neck and shoulder book, the student that I was using as the model had got diagnosed with cancer. I'm like, great, I'm gonna write a cancer book. And so then the cancer book came. And then I got back to the neck and shoulder book. And then finally, the woman's book, which was a result of, I had spent two years in India at a stretch in 1993, 1994. And I came really broken. I really came broken. I had done my PhD, took me nine years, and I was in a basement without windows all that time. I was working 17-hour days and doing all kinds of, different kinds of work, all the while teaching yoga. Every morning at 7:00 AM, all the evenings and weekends. And I was really broken. And I also had really painful fibroids that felt like a dagger digging into my lower abdomen 24 hours a day and sliding across. And at that time, I was really, before that time, I was really actually closer to Guruji from the long periods of time I spent in the prior decade. But for some reason, he wasn't as available at that time. There's an interesting thing about Guruji and Gita ji, kind of when Guruji would go down, Gita would go up. And when Gita was up, Guruji would go down. And I would say that this was a down phase for Guruji, and Gita took me under her wing and put me at the trestle for six months, wouldn't let me leave it for standing poses, making my abdomen soft, and then taught me all these amazing practices. And quite quickly, I no longer had pain. I won't say it cured my fibroids, but it helped me to live with them. You can't cure fibroids. The only thing to cure them is to make it to menopause and your estrogen goes down. And so it doesn't grow these things anymore. But I wanted to share what I had learned with the world. There were so many things to share. And during that period of time, during the annual day celebration, those women course notes that we, it was during, no, sorry, this was later. Okay, this was later. I asked Gita, can we have a women's intensive? And that didn't happen until 1997. I organized it and organized the notes. And in those notes, in the back, is this table that Gita ji created, which is really, you have to really have a good mind to go through it. And we took that table and we made a performance for the annual day celebration. And I thought, great, it's gonna be videotaped. It's gonna get out to the world. People are gonna learn, all this stuff. And it will be wonderful. And for example, I really wanted to have people in crossbolsters. It's not Srinambandh Sarvamdasan, it's its own pose. And it's such a wonderful pose. And most teachers, even senior teachers, knew nothing about crossbolsters. And when it came time for the annual day performance, before the performance, some guy took an hour and a half to read through the annual report of the institute, including all the acquired books. And I was like tapping my foot. And oh my God, we're gonna have to truncate this performance. And we, crossbolsters didn't get done. And there's the video of the performance, but it was very, it was cut short. We couldn't do everything. And then I thought, okay. Then I just said, Gita, you have to write another book. Because so much changed since Gem for Women ever. Everything changes. Just Lydon Yoga, as Prashant Ayengar says, was an antiquity the day after it was published. And so she said, no, you write the book. And we went back and forth. I didn't wanna write the book. It's a lot of work. She needs to write the book. She's the expert. So we went back and forth, and she won. And so I came up with a draft, and I presented her with this draft. And in those days, it was like I had to take photos and print them out, and I pasted it. It was different back then. And to paper and would type things out. And I had many different sequences for the menstrual practice. And she said, no, just make one sequence. And so I scratched my head on that one and made the one sequence. And then I just kept going with it, kept going with it. And finally, I brought her the full-blown draft, like getting close to publication. And I handed it over. And at some point, she handed it back, and I went through it, and there were hardly any changes. Like she didn't make red mark much. And I'm like shocked. And so I brought it to her again, and I said, are you sure about this? And she just went, which is the Indian way of saying yes. And I said, you mean, all those years I've spent learning with you, I've really learned everything? And she went. So I got it published. Now, I didn't dare, and this came before the other books, like that I expanded on, like Neck and Shoulders. This was really the first book. Really, it took 15 years from the thought to when it finally got published. And all the photos were with print film. And so there were 850 photos. It was a big project. And I knew I didn't wanna give it to Guruji, because I know how he operates. He'll have publishers coming to his desk and ripping out what he's working on, the manuscript out from under him, because he's a perfectionist. He was a perfectionist. And he would write and rewrite and rewrite. And so I just asked him, I just sent him a copy and asked him if he would write something about it. And he wrote such a beautiful thing. It's on the back cover. I was so touched by it. But then when I arrived in Pune, he had me sit down with him at his desk in the library. And first, he opened it up, and he was gazing at this photo I'd taken of him that he just loved. In fact, when I took the photo, he said, hey, you got lucky with that one. And he just loved that photo that I put in the book of him. And so he gazed at that for a while. And then he was turning the pages, and page by page, he was criticizing it. For example, I remember Arty Chindrasan. He said, see the lines of your cloth, meaning the lines on my T-shirt, the way they are. He said, this shows that this side of your abdomen is going backwards instead of coming forward. And he went through page by page. I would have never finished that book, never. So it took 15 years, really, from the idea when I first asked Gita to write it till when it got published. It never would have gotten published if I didn't give it to Guruji. So that's the story of the woman's book. And my compulsion to do these books is to just share knowledge with people. I wanted to let everybody know in our community about everything. They should have this knowledge. And I thought a book was a good way to share it. And yeah, so that's all I'll say about that now. Yeah.
Okay, so in this book, it says, Volume One. And I asked you about this maybe 10 years ago, the first time I sat down to talk with you. And you told me that Volume Two is about pregnancy. So could you tell us a bit about that?
When I first started the book, it was going to be everything. It was gonna be from menarche to menopause. And when I first approached a publisher about it, they said, no, narrow it down. It's too much. It really got too big. This Volume One had 850 photos, and it just got too big. And so I thought, okay, I'll just finish this and then start the next. And I thought the next one would be on pregnancy, another area where people know very little about pregnancy, even though they think they do. You don't, sorry. But I've been, I worked on it, and basically, I've stopped. I have a lot of it. I've shot a lot of the photos, because that's how I write the books. I do the photos first, and then I write from the photos. And then as I carry on, I do more photos. But I take all the photos first and write from the photos. And I just am too busy. I just don't have time. The other books came and stuff, and I just still run my own center. And you just need huge blocks of time to write a book. If I could take a couple of years off, I could get it done. Every now and then, I go back in. And every time I go back in, you have to start from the beginning again. As you may know, being a writer yourself, you have to start all over again. You can't just jump in where you left off. And so I keep jumping in and jumping out and jumping in and jumping out. And I also want it to be about menopause as well. But in terms of the menstrual book, what's very important to me in that book is the chapter on the post-menstrual practice. Having gone through menopause, I know how important that is to use that practice for when you're having a struggle with menopause. And even post-menstrual life, I've had so many people tell me that's the greatest sequence to practice. It leaves you so balanced. It's very much inversion-based. And during my own experience, I couldn't get off my head during menopause. And that's really a perfect practice for menopause. There's just one other pose that I discovered that would be in there. It's a variation on Prasari Tapadotinasan, which is great for like heavy bleeding during menopause or just the heaviness of the body, where the legs are pushing back to the wall. Prasari Tapadotinasan. And you start Konke back, and then you add Adhamukishvanasan. It's half Adhamukishvanasan, half Prasari Tapadotinasan, where you just take your hands forward on the floor and support the head with the block, and you go back and forth, and it's very calming. And I would add that to the post-menstrual practice, but it's very good for menopause.
Yes, and this book refers to all parts of the menstrual cycle. We have to say that it has a sequence for the day that a woman bleeds, but also the day that leading up to that, with the PMS, and then the days coming after it, and then ovulation as well. So basically, you said, I think, once that we have two or three days where we practice a general sequence.
Yeah, and that's, people have drawn that to my attentions. When do we get to practice other things? And the thing, getting back to that post-menstrual practice, I recommend practicing it for a whole five days, and I would do that. And by the fifth day, you wouldn't recognize it anymore as the post-menstrual practice. I would definitely do everything in that post-menstrual practice the first day. That structure of it, I would keep for the fifth day, but I would drop things out and add things in. So by the fifth day, I'm still using the structure of it, but most things are like taken out for other things to come in, and it segues into the practice without a focus on the reproductive organ, basically.
I wanted to ask you about your close relationship to Gita ji that you already mentioned. Could you share with us what it was like to learn directly from her?
As I, I was actually more afraid of her in the first decade of my going to Pune until she took me under her wing during my second decade. And during that time, the classes weren't that full yet still. The practice hall in the early 90s wasn't really that full. And there were a bunch of us. So I was there in 93, 94. Stephanie Cork arrived, her second trip. And we were neighbors, and so we became friends. And so that's when she started her 20-year period there. So she was there. And Anise Kanski, Zita Dodfar, and Annetta Herrenbrenner, we were all like lifers there, long-term people there. And we would always be assisting in the classes when we weren't taking class. Because when you're a longtime student there for an extended period of time, you can only take three classes a week. And the other days, you would learn by helping in the class. And then we would practice. And so sometimes, in the practice hall, it was just us and Gita ji. And sometimes, not all the time, she would say, come, let's practice together. And so doing that for two years definitely brought us closer. And just going there for long periods of time, even after that long stretch, we had a lot of contact with each other. So it was just a natural thing that we became close that way.
So another question about Gita ji. She emphasized in her teachings how women should adapt their practice during menstruation, and then of course, pregnancy and menopause. And seen women that resist this idea or women that kinda are unfamiliar, and then they adapt their practice, and maybe they change their relationship perhaps with their bodies or with yoga?
That's a very good question. And I wanna go back to the beginning of my learning back in the late 70s. And when I would drive the seven hours to study with teachers, I was with two other practitioners. We would practice every day at 7:00 AM together with Lydon Yoga. That's all we had. And then we went to a yoga camp. And we were driving home, and the last day was like back bends. And we were driving the long drive home. And one of my friends said, I had my period, and then it stopped after that back bend class. And that was the very first time, this was before any publication of Gem for Women. That was the first time I was like, oh. And in those days, nothing was taught, really, for women. I'm talking about late 70s, early 80s. And I went to Pune in 83. And only in 83 did I learn about the menstrual practice. And so only recently would I say that Pune is less strict now. When you come to Pune, they realize you're only there for three or four weeks, and you don't wanna miss out. So they let you participate more. And but they taught you how to practice with your period if you're in this class, like how to support yourself so you don't hurt yourself, but you can still do with the class, even back bends. But it's only come to that point because they finally drummed it into everybody that in your practice, class-going's one thing, but in your practice, you really need to do what you need to do for anything, not just the period. And so once they realized it got drummed in, then they became less strict about it when people were there to study for a short period of time. Most of the local students actually just stay home when they have their periods. And I would discover when I would go teach in other places, there were whole countries that resisted the menstrual practice. And I did the same thing. When I would go every year, I would make sure all the women needed to do what they needed to learn, until finally I realized, okay, it's drummed into them now. So I know they're going to practice that practice when they have their periods. But yeah, there was a resistance. Like going back to Indian women just stay home, they don't have that resistance. They have, I'm not gonna go down that rabbit hole of their whole culture and the period. But Western culture, you have commercials saying, you can wear these tampons and go horseback riding and slimming. You can do everything when you have your period. And it's okay, maybe you can, but there are some consequences, possibly. And it was really hard for people coming outside Pune to study there to, so to speak, obey, letting them know you have your period and you're gonna do a different practice. And oftentimes, when Gita would say, okay, shirshasana now, and then some students would come up and say, oh, I have my period. And then she would be so upset. Why didn't you tell me when I asked before class? Why didn't you go there? And they'd be like, I didn't wanna miss. There's, I do have a video on how to include your students in your general classes who have their periods now. There are certain things to do, as long as it's healthy. And so I always have that caveat when people tell me that their period, is it normal? Is it healthy? Because if it's unhealthy, you really need to do something that would help you and not harm you. And if you're consistently disregarding your period and practicing, it's that consistency of doing the wrong thing over and over again that you will invite problems. Possibly invite problems. I don't know if I answered your question now. I've forgotten the question.
Yes, you did. I asked about resistance to these adaptations and your experience with Gita ji. And how these adaptations change women's attitudes to their bodies. Yeah. So in light of this, I would ask you, what do you think is Gita ji's most significant contribution to yoga or for women in yoga?
I think I've already actually answered that question. She wrote Gem for Women, and for the first time, we realized, oh, yoga can help us. It's the first time. She was, first of all, women weren't really allowed to practice yoga. I think Indra Devi, was it, really had to push herself on Krishna Macharya to let her study with him. So there's some, early in our lifetimes, women yoga practitioners. But when I first went to Pune, there was all men practicing and very few women. And if the women came, they would be in sari sometimes and salvarkamisas. And so Gita, I don't know when she started the women's class, but I think it was to help women to come, to get permission to come. And I think the women who would come actually really liked being out of the home, away from their responsibilities. And so it turned, I didn't actually, the women's class in the beginning, because it was like the women were chattering all the time, and Gita was just trying to discipline them to pay attention and be quiet. They were so excited to be together in this class of women. And one time, Guruji was in the class practicing when Gita was teaching, and it was back bend week. And the women were talking and disobeying and being unruly, and he yelled at them, saying, if you're gonna keep talking, you're gonna have to do 12 more back bends. And they would keep talking, And they would keep talking and then they'd do 12 more back bends. And it was just about disciplining them in the class. And so I actually went to Prashant's men's class to get away from that. And I would just assist in the women's class and help discipline the women. And then it was sometime in the 90s that they really changed this women's class. And I even talked to Gita about it once. And you know, how really inward-going these women now are and they're so well-disciplined and they're practicing. And she said, yes, it took a long time. And now there's no more women's class. It's gone. And but even while Gita was still alive, she started letting men come into the women's class. I also, I still have a women's class. I let men come in. It's open to everyone. If men have pelvic organs like we do, they just don't have uteruses. They have their issues. They also get prolapse, they get infections. So the women's practice, in fact, when I, my first encounter, I was traveling somewhere and a friend of mine just got on, his friend just got at a hospital from testicular infection. And could I help them? Because nothing helps them and they keep getting it. And I didn't know what to do. I never worked with anybody with testicular infection. And I just thought, oh, let me do that practice for heavy bleeding because it's just really opening the pelvis, setting the organs right, getting them aligned and balanced, quieting them down. And it worked. It worked for him. And when I was an Indian actor, then I talked to Gita about it, that I do the right thing. And she said, yes. And I don't get very many men revealing their problems to me. It took one man in my regular classes to tell me he had a problem with an undescended testicle that he was going in and out of the hospital for. And could he take my therapy class? But not to tell any of the teachers what was wrong with him. So I had to lie and say it was a growing pull. Men are funny about sharing their issues, some of them, not all of them.
So what is the women's class about? Because you said Gita had it and then she let men participate. And then you have that class. And I think you shared once that the women start that class with purvatanasana and crossbolsters. What's the unique?
No.
That's your class. So what's unique?
How I started it was I was wanting to carry on. Everything I learned in Pune, I try to carry on. So I was like, I have to have a women's class, just like they do in Pune. I also have a men's class. I don't teach it. I have a man teach it. But to me, the first 15 minutes of class, like you said, starting with salamba provatanasana and crossbolsters, not sarbanva sarangasana. I want the woman to relax because women work so hard. I think women really carry very heavy loads. And I want them to deeply rest at least the first 15 minutes in class and then I'll kill them after that. And I focus on, a lot of the time, sometimes the students drive what I'll focus on because I'm always there half an hour before class. And sometimes we just chit chat or sometimes people come because they know I'm there and they want to ask about a particular problem. Just recently, somebody had plantar fasciitis and I did more of a focus on plantar fasciitis for that class. Otherwise, I'll focus on the pelvis, how to open the pelvis and bring a balance to the pelvic cavity, organs. Yeah. But it's also like a Pune class, first week standing, second week forward bends, third week back bends, last week recuperative pranayama.
Okay, one last question. You shared a lot of your knowledge in these beautiful books. And they serve me and I'm sure that they serve many other teachers and practitioners. And I'd like to ask you one about their limitations. Because I think they have the best in them, but also general guidelines have perhaps their limitations. You mentioned the post-menstrual sequence that should be done like the structure that you offered, but we don't have to stick to the asanas. We can change them, but keep to the structure. So one would be to, how would you address the limitations? And what do you feel is the most important to preserve in Ayengar yoga for future generations?
I might have you ask me that last part again.
Okay.
Because what's interesting is within, I think it was last year, I had somebody visiting from Patagonia. They were passing through. And while they were here, we were practicing in the same room together. And she got her period and I saw her get my book out and open it to the page of like the pictorial summary of the practice. And she was by the rope wall and she used a chair and a block and a belt to put her foot up on the chair when the rope wall was right there and it would just be simple. And this just reminded me that often people don't read the book. They don't, that's the limitation, is they don't read. And it's, look, that pictorial summary, that photo was chosen for that particular, that variation for that particular pose. And she then realized she could just simply use the rope. And so I decided I had then a, I had a menstrual course that was four parts. And so I went into depth in the first part of the first six poses of the menstrual practice. And then the forward bends and then the back bends. And then last, putting it all together. So they were a month apart. And so when we would meet the second time, we'd go through the first six poses together and then I'd go in-depth on the forward bends. And I was trying to tell people more about how to actually use my book, like to read it and see what works best for you. Most people don't read. I had another person contact me from Pune saying they were looking at my book in the institute. And this, it wasn't the women's book, it was a different book. And they gave me the page number and the figure. And they said, I think this photo is wrong. And I'm like, oh, my God. And I look it up and I read it and I'm like, okay, don't just look at the picture, read the text. The photo is not wrong. And so that's one aspect. Most people don't read. So I'm glad you're having this reading thing. And then the other aspect is there's, Ayengar yoga is so beautiful because we learn so much from our experiences in our practice. And as teachers, we learn from our own students. And so just like Light on Yoga, these books become an antiquity the day after they're published because there's so much more and more and more and more, it keeps evolving. And yeah, so what was the second part of your question?
What do you feel is most important to preserve for future generations in Ayengar yoga? You say the books are antiquity. So we have the guidelines and then we have the special adaptations. And we need to feel what feels right. And we need to look at the pictures and then read the text as well. But what should we take forward?
We always have Light on Yoga. That's the base. I still refer to it, still read it in my own practice. When I'm practicing, I'm like, oh, I gotta look that up in Light on Yoga, even though things are so different. For example, the forward bends in Light on Yoga start with the janishtashasana, starts with the right leg straight, left knee bent. And it got changed, left leg straight, right knee bent. Things are different, but it's still a classic. And there's still gems in there when you read and reread. And I just discovered recently something, I can't remember what it is right now, but it was, oh, my God, I didn't know that. And there it was in Light on Yoga all the time. So there's still classics. There's still, all the books are still good references. And I also feel like these books codify the body of work of the Ayengar family. It's preserving it, codifying it, preserving it for future generations. Because yes, things have evolved, things have changed. And I talked about this, maybe people have heard about Patricia Walden and I going to Gurji, asking him what we're going to do when he dies. And I have a whole separate story I'm not going to share. But he said that Ayengar yoga will be no more at some point. It will carry on for a while, but it will be no more at some point. And what's important is that when you're on your mat, you practice with integrity. And when you teach, you observe your students. Things die out. Things die out. And but we'll still have, I believe, even though there's such an explosion of yoga that started in the late 90s and has really drowned out our method in a lot of ways. But everybody is practicing Ayengar yoga, but they don't know it necessarily. In the beginning, in the early days, we were mocked for doing standing poses, having them as our base by the few other yogas that were there. And then everybody adopted the standing poses. Things I see that are obviously from other schools of yoga, there's an element of Ayengar yoga there. I think it all comes from Ayengar yoga. So we carry on.
That's a very optimistic view.
We're the light house. We're the beacon of light. And I'm grateful for Abhi because she's going to keep it going all her life. We're lucky to have her. We are really lucky to have her. She's wonderful.
Yes. Would you like to add something before we go to the Q and A?
No, I'd like people to have a chance.
So this is the time to write your questions in the chat. And if you'd like to open your camera and mic and ask, then you can raise your hand.
There's already a raised hand.
Yes, there is. So Heather?
Hi, good morning from California. This is a question from my mom, who's been practicing for 55 years. She wanted to know more about the history, the evolution of women's practices between Light on Yoga and Gem for Women. Because I've told her the story of what I've learned from you, that when you entered the Gita, but do you have any inclination to, I'm thinking of Gurji watching his wife get pregnant so many times, watching his daughters menstruate. Do you have any sense of that time period between Light on Yoga?
Well, it's not that Gurji, Gurji did teach about women's health. In fact, there's a book called Inner Beauty, Inner Light by Frederick Leboye that is, I'm spacing out on his eldest daughter's name. But Kaushik was the baby inside her womb.
Nita.
Vanita. And so he was already helping women with pregnancy. And then that was like really the first pregnancy book, Inner Beauty, Inner Light. And it's all photos. And I've often seen Gurji and Gita both helping students, especially in the therapy class, help women with problems of the pelvic organs. And the interesting thing was, a lot of times what Gurji would teach would be one thing and Gita would teach something completely opposite. And it would often confuse the students. And then I would just say, just don't worry, just practice what you think is best. And sometimes it was what Gurji did, sometimes it was what Gita did. But they were there between Light on Yoga and Gem for Woman, helping people with problems. It wasn't that it was nonexistent. It's just that we didn't know anything about it until Gem for Woman was published.
I heard from Gita G that she taught a lot of private classes when she was a teen and that she consulted a lot with her father about how to adjust their practice when they didn't get their menstruation or when they didn't get pregnant. So she had a lot of one-on-one experience where she would teach.
But I love that.
And she was, and she also taught her schoolmates, the girls in her school. And she just consulted Gurji, but often her mother. And then Ramani would consult Gurji. So it wasn't always direct. And then sometimes Ramani would give the answers because she also had a lot of experience with how to practice as a woman.
Interesting. Yeah, we have, Gurji did have these experiences and still he knew what to do.
So we have a few questions in the chat. One is by Victoria, wants to know more about what you mentioned in the beginning. Why did Ayengar work on his feet in pranayama for eight years before taking a breath? Was it his feet or his seat?
Oh, I don't.
His posture.
Because look, see, I repeat this often when I teach in pranayama, the position of the body, either in the salamba shavasana or the seated pranayama, the position of the body is the first thing to address. That Gurji was adamant about. He worked on it himself and he gave us shortcuts. We didn't have to spend eight years working on the seat. But I'll tell you, when I spent my first year in Pune, the first three weeks was this intensive. And back then, there was two hours in the afternoon of pranayama class. There was no lying down, no shavasana. I was light on pranayama, hadn't been published yet. We just sat the first hour in padmasana and breathe. And then the second hour, we changed the cross of the legs. I died, I was numb from the waist down. It was so different. Then they realized foreigners sit on cushy things all the time and they can't sit in padmasana for two hours straight. And so then they've changed, they evolved because they learn from their own students. And people don't have to suffer anymore. But then back in, oh, it was 93, I think there was this, the first pranayama intensive. And he asked us not to practice asana, our usual asana. So we would have our raw bodies for our pranayama course. And we worked on the seat. We hardly breathed. He would have us bring tissues and stuff them all over the place when we were seated. And then we would take this one breath at the end. But what a powerful breath that was. You get closer to your own true form. And so that was telling. And so, I don't know, I think I've said enough about why, I don't know truly why he did that. I wasn't there when he did that, but that's just my experience.
There is one question about, if you can advise about practicing after five weeks of having post-pelvic surgery. There is one question about how long does it take to shut off thoughts while practicing pranayama? And two are asking.
Wait, no, okay, wait, let's wait. These are too many questions. First of all, I can't really, this is difficult to answer that first part about post-pelvic surgery because I would have probably 25 or 50 questions to ask them. I know nothing about them. I don't know if they're a classgoer, if they're a practitioner. I don't know their age. I don't know what kind of surgery they had. Were they completely cut open? Did they have laparoscopic surgery? Why did they have it? How old are they? What's their body type? What do they look like? I would really like to see what they look like, front, side and back. I'd like to watch them walk. I'd like to see how they bend, how traumatic was the surgery? I have a million questions. I can't give an answer until I know. This is a problem. Now everybody's going to be afraid to ask me anything. But a lot of times in these Q and As, personal issues come up. I have this problem or I have a student who has this problem. And it's like, a lot of times, you just have to make sure they're a student first. I have people ask me and they haven't even come to class yet. And they, or they've only come to one class. It's just wait, let them be a classgoer at least first before I answer your question. So I can't answer that question. It's so individualized. First of all, you need permission from your medical professional to start up practice again. I don't know anything. So I can't really answer that. If I knew all these things, then possibly I can give some answers. But I need like all the facts before I could say something.
Thank you.
There was a second part of the question.
Yes. No, it's a different, a different question. But two are asking about can they study with you therapeutic course online?
Okay, so during the pandemic, four years in a row, it was a miracle that we pulled off the therapy intensive week, seven days, online. It was great, but now we're back in person. It's starting next week. So you have to come here. And people still wanted to do online and I want to do it too, but I don't have time. There's a lot of preparation that goes into making the therapy course work. It was a great thing because we loved it. I was able to help people around the world who weren't able to travel, actually, because of their health conditions. There were miracle stories, wonderful things happened. It was so wonderful, but now you have to come here. The next best thing is actually take my women's class because issues come up with people. I have people spotlighted. I have a person going through cancer treatment right now who's spotlighted. I'm keeping an eye on them, guiding them. I have a person who just finished their cancer treatment, guiding them. I spotlight the pregnant students, the postpartum students. So I'm leading them through class, but it's not a therapy class, but these things come up and I take care of it. So the women's class is the next best thing. You can also rent it if the time of day doesn't work out. It probably would work out because it's my time. It starts 9:15 in the morning. Yeah. And I'm always there half an hour before to help people. And I do a brief 10-minute Q and A after, except pranayama week because people shouldn't be in their brains after pranayama. Next question.
About pranayama, how long does it take to shut off thought while practicing pranayama?
Lifetimes. As it is, but I'll just say a little bit more, not really to that question, but most people don't practice pranayama. I'll tell a funny story. This was, I think in 83, when I was there for you. And the classes were very small and you just couldn't believe how small. And it was pranayama week and Prashant was teaching this class and he asked people to raise their hands if they didn't practice pranayama that day, that morning or whatever. And only two people honestly raised their hands. And he put them on a platform, on the platform to sit in the chair to watch the class the whole time. And then we were obviously guilty because we didn't practice the pranayama really. And they were getting punished for being honest. Most people don't practice pranayama. I actually do. For whatever reason, when I first learned pranayama, I rolled out of bed and started doing it every day for the rest of my life. I can't function without it. So the first thing about pranayama is to have that daily practice. So maybe it could be five minutes lying down. Only that's a practice as long as you're doing consistently every day. It shouldn't be turned on and off. You shouldn't like practice here and there and then forget it for a while. Oh, I have to practice it, forget it for a while. It's a daily practice. I really try to instill it in people, even if it's salamba shavasana, lying down, observing the breath, being quiet, that's a practice because it does something to you, it changes you. And it brings you closer to your own true form where you can become quiet. You can start to block out those thoughts more and more. Maybe it's just for. Maybe it's just for an infinitesimal moment in time, but at least for that infinitesimal moment, you were quiet. And that comes from practice.
Esther?
Yeah. So there has been more recently a lot of research around women's health and strength training. And then how do you manage perimenopause, menopause, et cetera, using strength training and preserve muscle health, et cetera? Do you, like from your perspective of Ayengar Yoga, do you have an opinion on that? Or would you, I'm guessing that for you, the strength aspect in Ayengar Yoga in a class or in your own practice might be a little bit different given that you practice with Mr. I think self? I don't know. Or do you have any idea of, do you avoid any kind of outside exercise of lifting weights, et cetera? Or yeah, any idea?
Well, I haven't started lifting weights yet, but I did take up jump roping.
Okay.
And I found it very useful. It's very hard. I, the, I always, on Mondays, I do all the standing poses with a clock, to be honest. I hold them one minute each side. Sometimes I find I'm holding them because I'm not looking at the clock the whole time. But sometimes I'm like, oh, my God, a minute and a half went by because I got Psalms absorbed. But I do all the standing poses for a minute. Honestly, not Virbharasana three, I try to hold it for nine or 10 breaths. If I'm lucky, I count the breaths. But the standing poses are really important. And also one-legged standing poses are really important to maintain not just the muscle that you need, but the bone. And, and so some, and then the other days of the practice, I always put in standing poses related to what I'm doing. My Mondays is the start of my practice week and I'm doing all those standing poses. And even some that you don't think of as being a standing pose, I include in that practice. But I have lost muscle mass. It's, and I have to do other things, I find. And I found, I thought I wrecked my knees with jump roping. It actually made my knees stronger because it, it improved my hamstrings, actually. And it's great on the breath. It was really hard to build up to 500 jumps in 10 minutes and I hate it. But I do it. And I do other things. I also, when I turn 60, I just wanted to, in the aging process, I wanted to be more flexible in my mind. That's the most important thing. And so I wanted to expand things. I took up tango. I took, I learned to swim and now I swim three days a week. And it expanded a lot of things. I have tango friends, I have swimming friends. I don't have jump roping friends. But I think one of the most important things, if you want to take up some kind of strength training, you do have to focus on your practice to help keeping the muscles long and elongated, not just to bulk them up. But yeah, the muscle mass is difficult. You lose it. And they keep saying, at first it was like you lose 4% every year at age 50. Now they're saying at age 40, you start to lose it. And now they're saying at age 30, you start to lose it. But yeah, I do feel it. And I also like to walk. And when I travel, I like to do hikes. I, hiking here is flat, but when I travel, I like to do every Sunday. I'm out in the mountains in Puna every Sunday. So that's just who I am. I like obviously to be physically active and expand my consciousness and be flexible in my mind, not to be rigid. Because as you age, you can become very rigid, very dogmatic. And you really need to increase the flexibility in your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
There is one more question, perhaps the last from Kuka. She asked if you could say a few words about yoga during times of distress? And I could use those words as well.
Oh, this is a really appropriate question because today is the anniversary of our 9/11 here. And a very interesting thing happened that it was a Tuesday and I have my advanced class. And then I follow it with my introductory class. I teach these two classes back to back. Every single one of my students came to the advanced class. They knew to get on the mat, to help. Nobody showed up to the beginner class. And when they came the next week, they said, oh, sorry, I missed class. I just didn't think it was right to go to a yoga class on that day. So do you see the difference between a practitioner and somebody who's a raw beginner? We know that we would be wrecks, basically, if we didn't have our practice. We would be completely different people. And we know whatever, when there's, there's always stress in our lives. You can't, there's no such thing. There used to be a big deal about managing your stress. Take these managed stress courses. You can't manage stress. You can't control what comes your way except by being present. Not to worry about the future, not to worry about the past. Be present by getting on your mat. When you get on your mat and you practice, you're present and the stress that comes your way doesn't affect you so adversely. And we know what to do for emotional stability. We know what to do for grief and shock when your world is turned upside down. You know what to do when you're manic. You know what to do when you're depressed. Or maybe you don't. I feel like I need to teach on a course on emotional stability because I have some different ideas about, for example, not that I have different ideas, just what I've learned from my studies. Depression is not just about doing backbends. It's not all about backbends. And it's very person-specific, situation-specific, what you need to do. Like Guruji said, have integrity when you're on your mat and go to your mat. Go and practice. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I have to say, Agi really had to work hard to make this happen with me. So I appreciate your persistence, your tenacity. So thank you, Agi.
And thank you, Lois, for talking to us. And thank you, I can't even express my gratitude for you writing down all this knowledge, making your knowledge available, traveling around the world,